Good evening and welcome to the work session for the City Commission of the City of Oregon City. I'd like to convene the meeting and ask for the roll call, please.
Commissioner Scott Wilson here. Commissioner Mike Mitchell here. Commissioner Rocky Smith here. Commissioner Adam Morrow here. And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present, so how come he got Mr. and nobody else got Mr.?
I think I said Commissioner too quickly.
I just, well, he is special. I mean, he is special. We just were pointing that out. So tonight on our agenda, we have one item of general business, and it is the Destination Marketing Management Organization's contractual presentation. James, if you would, please. And turn your mic on.
Oh, good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to be with you tonight to hear with you the presentation of the DMO, the contractual presentation of the DMO tonight. As you know, by April of 2025, you had chosen all the members of the Board of Directors of the DMMO, Destination Oregon City Inc., and I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the members of the Board of Directors of that organization. Holly Saul, she's the General Manager and Best Western Plus Riverside Hotel and President of the Board of Directors. Lee Bilowski, she is the Vice President of the Board, and she's the Flatwater Operations Manager with Energy Kayaking. Dr. Daria Lori, she's the founder of Imperfecta Gallery, and she's Treasurer of the Board of Directors. Triest Andrews, she is a community arts advocate, and she is Secretary of the Board of Directors. Corinne Lorenthal, Executive Director, End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. She's a Board Member of the organization. Jessica Land, Executive Director of the Oregon City Farmers Market, and she also is a Board of Director, a Board Member. Bryce Morrow is the founder of the Oregon City Brewing Company, and he's a Board Member. And of course, our very own Rocky Smith, Commissioner, who's the ex-official member of the Board.
Ladies, would you please stand? Thank you so much.
And with that, I will...
And introduce?
With that introduction, I will ask the President of the Board, as well as come up, and then we'll go from there.
You're not introducing our, the executive director?
We are. If you wait, we'll do that.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. I was not planning on speaking. Thought we went over this, but that's okay. I am Holly Saul. I'm the General Manager of the Best Western Riverside Hotel and the Chair of the Board of Directors. Sitting next to me is Celecia. I always add an A. I'm so sorry. Always add an A. And she has an amazing presentation to present with you tonight. Hello. Thank you so much for having me, having my amazing board. Honestly, I lucked out with this board. They're wonderful, and I feel so supported. I am going to be presenting...
For the record, your name is?
I'm sorry.
For the record, your name is?
Let me introduce myself, actually. I am Celecia Johnston. And before I dive into the coordination plan, I'll give a little intro about myself. I've been in the tourism industry for about 15 years. I'm originally from Texas, but moved to the Portland area 11 years ago now. My husband was in the military. We moved around all over. And once we landed here in the Portland area, we have not looked back. Planting our roots here and absolutely love it. And I'm very pleased to be able to do community development work now after my years of doing tourism development around the world and here in the U.S. I've been DMO staff. I've been DMO board and contractor before. So it's my pleasure to bring my skills and experience here to Oregon City. The last two years, I was actually doing DMO development work for USAID internationally and in rural America. So my job has been for the past two years, setting up DMOS for like two-year contracts exactly as I've done here. So again, it's really exciting to be here and be doing this. In addition, I'm a certified PMP, Project Management Professional, so I bring that skill and experience to some of the work I'm going to be talking about tonight. So for the coordination plan, I did a clicker. Yay, thank you so much. Perfect. For the coordination plan, I've got six sections, six slides. Well, the action plan actually added two extra slides on there, but it's going to be pretty quick, and I want to leave time for discussion and questions and feedback for my presentation, official presentation later on. So first, we're going to talk about the challenge. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this slide because I don't like focusing on the negative, but what I did want to do was speak to or restate what I've heard from the meetings that I've had so far to date. I started in August and have been meeting one-on-one with stakeholders in the community with a few of you already. And so what I heard, and especially whenever I interviewed for this position, I asked, you know, what is the reason why the city decided to create a DMO? And what I heard, and what I've heard from many people, is there are siloed organizations that are, have their own missions, have their own visions, going different directions, and maybe not aligned and moving in the same direction. So what I am proposing and what I have heard is that the DMO is essentially building a hypothetical proverbial table for these organizations to come sit at. This framework is essentially the community-based tourism framework or model. And the idea that, so the why here, the why for this DMO and our objectives are to bring alignment and co-creation and trust-building, collaboration, advocacy, all of these wonderful things, cost-sharing, capacity-building. That is a role of a DMO in a community whenever you're doing a community-based tourism model. So this model rejects top-down mass tourism prescriptions and priorities and prioritizes local voices and values. So the plan, what that I'm going to be talking about tonight, the action plan, is really bringing together the various stakeholders, organizations in the community, and facilitating, I see myself as a consultant and a facilitator in this situation. So through facilitated workshops and stakeholder engagement, the plan is to then map our assets, tourism assets, identifying the stories, the places, the traditions, the people that make Oregon City what Oregon City is. We're going to define the goals and advance local priorities, including economic development and making it a great place to live, and then design experiences, visitor experiences, and resident experiences. So I am experienced in various facilitation techniques, but I want to put together workshops, round tables, and then some structured engagement opportunities like committees as well, which we'll talk about in a moment. Yeah, essentially, the idea, and this is where my project management hat comes on, the idea is that I would translate these visioning outcomes into actionable strategies and action plans with RACI charts and all of that. In my meeting with Commissioner Mitchell, we actually discussed the 2017 strategic plan that was done, and the question was, is it still relevant? Is it still useful? And I can tell you, having worked for USAID for the past two years, it is so... The saddest thing is whenever you put a lot of time and effort and energy into, and money, into a strategic plan for it to just sit on a shelf. We never wanted to see that. We always want to put a really strong action plan and RACI chart together to move forward. So I'm letting you know that this is not wasted. It is a great strategic plan. Of course, there's updates to it, but it is a fantastic start. The fact that you've already had this, that I didn't have to build this and start over and create a new strategic plan is huge, and so it is very well done. I know the folks who put it together. We were all trained in the same formulas. And so it's basically, you know, the outcome is something that I probably would have put together as well. So we're not starting from scratch, and I'm already seeing... I feel like the destination, Oregon City, is ready, ready to start moving forward because I'm already seeing this coordination plan and efforts. In just the first one and a half months of meeting with stakeholders, they're already starting to move together and work together and use the same shared messaging, right? So I have created a theory of change, and this is a lot of words on a slide, but I basically put this in the document, in the coordination plan, to help you understand where I'm going to be working from, the mindset that I'm working from. So I have a messaging approach that is positive and collaborative and talking about, you know, a message emphasizing the rising tide lifts all boats. And so I want the DMO not just to coordinate tasks and check off, you know, action items, but to change this culture of silos when we talk about the tourism industry into, and the idea of scarcity, right, into one of shared abundance. So when I talk about this theory of change, and I will go ahead and read it out for the record, but just so you know, that this is the place that I'm working from. And this is part of who I am and what I believe and all of the work that I do moving forward is based on this. If Oregon City stakeholders are given clear opportunities to collaborate, positive shared messaging that emphasizes mutual benefit, and structured visioning spaces, like workshops and round tables, to co-create the future, then they will gradually shift from fragmented competitive behaviors towards collective action, which will lead to stronger alignment, broader participation, and a culture of innovation, ultimately resulting in a thriving collaborative destination where stakeholders all benefit from increased visibility, visitor spending, and community pride, making Oregon City a great place to visit and a great place to live. So this, I include a statement like this just to know this is where my heart is and what I believe for all stakeholders moving forward as long, you know, as they're related to the tourism industry and the visitor economy. Okay, moving into the meat of the presentation here, the how. These are the strategies that we're going to be engaging with the stakeholders. Things like information sharing. I'm going to be pulling together a lot of data and analyzing this data and being able to present it back out to community groups and to our stakeholders. Education and training is a big thing for me. I really enjoy doing technical assistance. And a lot of DMOS provide opportunities for one-on-one work with tourism businesses, helping them with marketing opportunities, helping them with social media, things like that. But then also bigger programs, which we'll talk about in a moment, but like frontline training programs. Travel Portland actually just announced their, I think the Rose City Ambassadors is what they're calling it. There, so there's a lot of opportunities for workforce development as well in a DMO and our role that we can offer to the community here. Recognition and appreciation, you know, this can be everything, this can be anything from an annual awards dinner where we're recognizing hospitality employees to just in one-on-one conversations where, you know, we recognize the hard work and we appreciate the hard work of all the people around us as opposed to, you know, pointing fingers or, you know, being upset, like taking a moment and including gratitude in our, in our community, I think is extremely important. Two-way storytelling is another strategy. Empowerment is huge for me. If there are young people, especially marginalized communities that want to put forward a tourism idea, then I want to be able to be there. I hope that the DMO will be there in the future to help empower these people who have business ideas or want to become, you know, a tourism marketer or whatever it is. So I really would include empowerment in our strategies. Collaboration workshops, of course, we've talked about. We'll dive into a little bit more. Consultation and feedback loops, this goes both ways. Not only can the DMO sit in a place where we are giving feedback to the tourism businesses and organizations, but also I will always, always take feedback and advice from the community. Because even if I have 15 years of experience in the tourism industry, I don't with Oregon City. So I'm still learning all the players. I'm still learning all the history. I went on Commissioner Smith's Haunted History Tour at Halloween, and it was fantastic. I learned a lot. So I will always take feedback and always take advice on ways to direct the organization. Advocacy and policy engagement, as well as an example, I have met with Frog Ferry and have prepared, you know, a letter of support for Frog Ferry because it aligns so well and fits so well with the future vision. And so a letter of support like that could go to state representatives. That's an example of how advocacy can play a part. Digital tools, our tools include digital tools like the website as far as stakeholder engagement goes. We will be creating, it's not in the website existing right now, but if you look at Travel Oregon, Travel Portland, Mount Hood Territories websites, they all have partner pages. And so we will be including a partner page that will have the brand kit, a media kit, event submission form, all the ways that the community can actually get involved, be engaged, any event announcements, those kinds of, those kinds of things. And of course, the meeting schedule, the public meeting notices will be on the website as well. Social media, of course, email, all of those things. In-person touchpoints include not only our open public board meetings, but also quarterly stakeholder mixers, which, well, yeah, I'll talk about now, actually. So the plan is to have a quarterly stakeholder gathering that kind of works as a familiarization tour or a site visit where we get, the tourism industry gets to be a tourist in our own town. So we, each quarter, we will go to a new location. We will chat. We will network, and we'll hear a learning presentation. We'll hear from our host venue, what's new with them. Maybe they offer a behind-the-scenes tour, whatever the case may be. I think this is going to be a really fun opportunity for all of the tourism stakeholders to get together, to vision together, to become friends, trust, you know, trust-building, and know what's going on in our, you know, in our community, at our different assets. The next one, or the first one, our inaugural stakeholder mixer, is going to be Friday, November 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., hosted at the Oregon City Welcome Center at the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, where we're going to hear from Ms. Corinne about all of the wonderful things they have going there. And then I will be presenting kind of an initial introductory presentation about the DMO, what we are, what we plan to be doing, and the community engagement programs for the stakeholders to be involved in. And then more formal structures are going to be things like committees. DMOS usually have committees where, and I don't want the lift to be heavy, right? These are maybe quarterly meetings or twice-a-year meetings where the community comes in and they speak to and direct the activities of the DMO staff. So I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. This, I won't spend a ton of time on this, but just so you know, as a formal practice in strategic planning and project management, there usually are stakeholder maps. So this is just a quick example of what a stakeholder map for the Oregon City DMO looks like. Each time I engage a new stakeholder, tourism business, nonprofit organization, vendor, whatever it is, I am adding them to our stakeholder system, but I'm also looking at and mapping them on where they sit in this, in this matrix. So we don't have to dive into this too much, but just know that it is something that I look at because it helps with task management to be able to say, oh, I need to reach out to this stakeholder and touch base with them and make sure they're, they're doing okay and see, you know, how I can help them or what information I can give to them. So it's a great way to kind of manage that process. Okay, so diving into the action plan, the chart on the top is essentially a process of engagement. And this is kind of like a my task management tool whenever I'm engaging stakeholders. So we go with outreach. This is where I am with a lot of our stakeholders right now. Introductory emails, intro meetings, presentations, like my, a tour of presentations I'm planning on doing with community civic groups, like the Rotary or the Optimist Club or neighborhood associations. These are kind of first initial outreach. This is who, you know, who the DMO is and what we are and how we're going to be engaging in the community. Relationship is then a little more detail where I understand and learn their vision and mission. I'm understanding the details of their business. Things like, are they, as an example, things like, are they women-owned and operated? Are they veteran-owned and operated? Do they offer vegan meals? Do they allow dogs? The reason I bring these up is because in our stakeholder system, and then therefore on our website, I will be able to quickly filter and search and pull the list of like, oh, we have 20 businesses that are da-da-da-da-da. Then I can create blogs. I can create social media posts that are, you know, listicles are what they're called. So it's a way to categorize and engage these various tourism assets and businesses in our promotional activities. Of course, adding them to the website if relevant, highlighting them in social media. These are all proof that the DMO is listening to them, recognizes them, and are encouraging, and are promoting their work. Adding their events to the community event calendar, which I do feel is an easy win for us. Going to be working with a vendor on updating that event's calendar and ensuring that it is updated with all of our stakeholder events, community events, and then pushing those back out to our, to our travel partners, Mount Hood, Territory, Travel Portland, et cetera. Moving on, of course, it's greater engagement, including them like doing interviews for blog features or video, video features, asking them if they want to participate in cooperative ad opportunities, campaigns, inviting them to the quarterly stakeholder mixers, and including them in media, FAMs, and site visits. So this is where they then give a little bit extra and engage a little bit more, right? Further than they're involved in the programs, they're actually a part of like the committees, and maybe they're doing sponsorships. So it's just an escalation and like a life cycle of stakeholder management is what I'm going through here. And of course, reporting, that's that year-over-year engagement, proof that we're all working together and we're moving the needle and look at our baseline and we're building on top of those things. The committees part here is bolded, and I've included a little table below that I did want to talk to the commission about. And actually, I even have an update already. So first two requests, or the first request was to perhaps pull together a Historic Properties Roundtable or a History and Heritage Roundtable, where we bring together the heritage organizations to discuss tourism and ideas to move forward. Of course, I understood after this first idea and the request to do this that it is happening with the Coordination Committee and with Clackamas Heritage Partners pulling together already some really cool, I don't know if you've seen, I'm holding up their, the End of the Oregon Trails Interpretive Center passport that you get whenever you purchase your ticket, but it includes, I mean, they're actively engaging and participating in, the heritage partners are engaging in this booklet, this passport, but it's a step forward in being able to do package tours or shared ticketing or things like that. And I know discussions like that have been had in the past. And so this is an opportunity, once again, to bring together those stakeholders and have conversations. So that is in the plan. In addition, there's another roundtable that was brought up after I created this, this presentation, an Arts and Culture Roundtable, which I think is super exciting because arts and culture is strong and growing in Oregon City. And so there are a number of organizations, including, I spoke with Arts Commissioners Josh and Rebecca, and they were very excited about this opportunity to discuss and brainstorm on ways that the arts community can engage in tourism as well. So those are some first initial roundtables to just get the conversations going and, you know, having presentations about how, how the DMO can, can help move the project plan forward for them and partner with them. The first committee, official DMO committee, that I would like to propose to the board and to our stakeholders, is a Marketing and Events Committee. This one is pretty, pretty important, and I plan to hope that it will be ready by the end of this fiscal year, so in June-ish. And I'd like to bring together or offer for marketing and PR professionals and anyone, arts and events organizers, anyone who's interested in the promotion and storytelling and marketing of Oregon City to come together. And they will look at the marketing plan that I've created for this year and, you know, the things that I've said that we would get done for Oregon City Tourism, what did get done, how it performed, and then to help direct how marketing funds will be, will be spent in the following year. So then I would write the following marketing plan based on their direction and their advice and their suggestions and their creative ideas. So it is not, you know, it is not my, my marketing plan. It's the community's. Again, going back to community-based tourism. And then we're going to talk about community engagement programs as well. The other, the other committees listed here are suggested. These are committees that I've had at DMOS that I've worked in in the past. Things like a Visitor Experiences Services Committee, Sustainability and Stewardship Committee, Finance and DMO Development Committee, and Destination Development and Infrastructure. These are pretty common in larger DMOS, not necessary for, for this one, especially right now, but I do want to bring them up as an option in other ways for the community to be involved. But the community engagement programs, again, this is a suggested list, but I want to offer these as ways that the community, that residents, can become involved. A program like a concierge or frontline ambassador training program, which I've already discussed, where it's workforce development, training on customer service, but also destination history and natural, natural history training, things like that. A Meeting and Event Champion Incentives Program. This is where residents who live in Oregon City, they may be, they travel elsewhere to go to their, their association meetings. Well, if it's the right size, how about we encourage them to bring their association meetings here? meetings here into Oregon City? This is a very successful program that I ran in Monterey, California and, and was, the community residents were, were really engaged in it. So it's a great suggestion as far as being able to get more meetings and, and events here into Oregon City. Social media creator, influencer, collabs and takeovers, that leads into also student engagement. I, I discussed with Commissioner Smith, the idea of, of an internship or job shadowing, class project for credit program, would love to get students involved in this. It can be, you know, through data or marketing or a variety of, of other, you know, classes that they could, could be involved in. So that's something that, that I would suggest and offer. Realtor, a welcome home, since that is the tagline for the brand, relocation cooperative marketing opportunity, that has also been a good program for DMOS. Tourism industry appreciation campaign and resident surveys, this is all about helping the residents appreciate and understand the impact of tourism. In, I think it's St. Petersburg, Florida, they did a program similar to this that got really great media. Anytime there was a community event that was essentially either sponsored by the DMO or there was an installation or something where the transient lodging tax helped establish and pay for it, their, their DMO would put up a, put up a sign as a part of this campaign that said something like, from visitors with love or paid for by people who wish they lived here, something like that. So it's, you know, it's cute, but it's a way to help residents understand the impact of tourism on their community. And then of course, you know, the idea of an annual tourism industry dinner and award ceremonies could be in collaboration with, you know, the, the chamber perhaps or something like that. But again, a place where we can recognize people who work on the front lines in the hospitality industry and, and award them for their, for their work in making Oregon City a great place to, to visit. So these are, again, suggested ideas, but they are ways to get the community involved and stakeholders involved. There have been successful in DMOS elsewhere, so certainly something to consider for our stakeholders here. And then in the plan, I also of course have the action plan laid out in quarters and how these, these activities are scheduled. That is the end of the coordination plan slides and presentation. I believe you do have the full white paper that goes into a little more detail, has gives a lot of, of descriptions and, and things like that. But I do want to open it up to feedback and then also maybe a discussion on metrics and evaluation and, and kind of the progress report, the great, you know, how, how it's graded, right? There are standard DMO KPIs, key performance indicators, that we of course will be tracking, but I want to make sure that this work is being measured against the commissions, the commissions, you know, hope for the DMO and, and the funding of it. So thank you for letting me go over that, that coordination plan. And I open it up to any questions.
Gentlemen, any comments or questions? Please let's not have silence. So on page six of the annual marketing plan, you have some brand messaging and positioning. Of course, I picked out my favorite options, but I, you know, wanting to know how you are thinking about looking at those. Are we looking at all of those options or one option, two options, then there's James' option?
Yeah.
Which I thought that was good.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the, the second piece to my contractual obligations, as far as presentation goes, is an annual marketing plan. Of course, we are in the second quarter of our fiscal year, but we, I do have slides for the marketing plan and of course the, the full paper as well. And yes, these are, to your, to your question, Mayor, in the strategic plan that was done in 2017, a lot of beautiful brand work was done, resident feedback, you know, all of, all of the things that I would have done were put together. And there were things like a unique selling proposition that was proposed. It is quite, it's quite long, so I did suggest for a unique selling proposition to, to condense it, to make it a quick, quick and memorable statement.
So something akin to not quite as, as focused as an elevator pitch?
Yes.
But, but something that is, like you say, is memorable.
Exactly, something memorable and, and unique to Oregon, to Oregon City, right? So there, there are, there are options with just slight word variation. And I do believe that there was one in the annual marketing plan slides that was kind of decided on, but as again, I, I said, I'm always open to feedback, always open to, to suggestions. So the unique selling proposition, yes, has, has kind of been narrowed down. I think it's a bit of a combination of, of some of these, of some of these options. I don't know if we can pull up the marketing slides and that way we can have a visual here as well.
I had gone back and looked at the work via 2017.
Yeah, exactly. It was, no, it was done so beautifully. And there also a piece of marketing plans that I like to include as a positioning statement, which is an internal statement for marketing teams. So I also created one of those on page seven. Yes, actually, oh, there we go. Thank you so much. And I think I've got, okay. So to the mayor's question, the unique selling proposition is in the long blue box there. Oregon's hometown is the first city with the next story, a gathering grounds where rivers, cultures and histories converge to welcome new experiences. So it's, it's a quick statement that's, that immediately calls out what's special about Oregon City. In addition, and this slide essentially is a quick snapshot of our brand guidelines that I've created. So we've got our colors, we've got our logo, we've got our brand pillars, which were kind of called out in the, in the strategic plan. And then there's also kind of subcategories underneath our brand pillars for things like, you know, the blogs and the websites and whatnot. I did, I did speak with Commissioner Marle about potentially pulling out the food and beverage world as a, as a standalone brand pillar as opposed to like a subpillar or subcategory. So something certainly to consider and think about. But what we want to do is really identify and tease out what makes Oregon City different from all of the other competitor towns around us.
On, on that first block, I guess I would make a suggestion rather than saying living history, because that means something very specific. What I always talk about when I'm doing my talking about Oregon City, it's authentic history.
Authentic history.
Because what we have here is not something that's been, you know, put aside like a Disneyland with all in one place, but you can walk through the city and you can see authentic history.
Yeah.
Yeah. I love that. Living history is kind of what we do at, when we're doing, you know, we're talking, we're in first person and we're portraying somebody or doing something. And so that's, I don't, I wouldn't say that-
It is specific reenactment is type.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that that is something that most people would think of in terms of, of Oregon City, but that's one of the things I speak of often, I said, you can go and look at these buildings because they're there, they're authentic, they're, they're still there, they're not someplace else or, you know.
Yeah. Love that, love that. And happy to make that change. Another thought was, was keeping in consistent with like arts and culture, community and family, history and heritage. We could do that as well, where it's just, you know, a, you know, similar, consistent brand there. Absolutely, happy to make that change. I did want to mention on page 13 of the marketing plan, this was something that was not in the strategic plan. I did do a competitor analysis. So you've got a list of peer or competitor towns that may be vying for the same visitors because our target audience is, they are explorers of the Portland metro region, right? So anyone who lives in Portland, Portland metro or is visiting the Portland metro and is exploring the area, that's, that's our target audience. And so these towns may be considered, you know, competitors, whether they, it's because they are, you know, in, in the outskirts of the Portland metro like we are or have particular history and heritage or something similar in our, in our brand pillars. So we, we want to look at these and understand how do we differentiate ourselves as a community? And that's where that unique selling proposition comes in and our brand pillars come in. We may share a brand pillar with another community, but, but this, this helps us be able to truly identify. And then on the next page, page 14, I also include benchmark or US community peers outside of Oregon. And these are similar in size, similar in offerings, or also may have a hometown brand, brand message. So something to look at as far as our brand messaging goes and our, our hometown message. So those are also benchmarked for us. Any thoughts on the, or questions on the, on the brand? And as a part of the marketing plan, I, I am going to be testing this brand because it was created before I came, which is wonderful, it's totally fine, I love it. But there will be a brand awareness kind of survey done in the middle of next year. I, I, I want to be sure that the messaging sticks, that it is actually giving the, you know, the, the message of our USP, of our unique selling proposition and, and that it is getting responses. So we'll, we'll be doing that probably summer of next year, a brand awareness survey. Any questions there?
Just, I've got a real, a quick question in the comment on one of the slides. First UGC campaign, what's UGC?
Yes, yeah, apologies, on the slides I had to shorten things. User-generated content, and I'm happy also to, I can, I can kind of go over these, the marketing plan objectives quickly. User-generated content, this is a way to get really authentic, locally told stories or visitor experience stories. It's also an inexpensive way to get marketing done, right? We could spend a lot of money on, you know, huge photo shoots and video shoots and, and create this curated, you know, view and list of, of how we want Oregon City tourism to look. We absolutely could do that, make it nice and, you know, shiny and splashy, right? But what, what is resonating with, with visitors now and tourists now are, are true, authentic, like, you know, it's kind of like the Instagram versus reality, have you seen that, you know? User-generated content is, is the real authentic experiences being retold and re-shared.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Just a, just a quick comment, both in, in the meeting that we had last week, which thank you for that, that was great, and tonight, and I agree with you, we want to be positive and move forward, but, but I think recognizing those challenges that you laid out on one of the first slides is really important because that is something that's going to have to be overcome. And hopefully we can put that in the rearview mirror and, and move forward, but I'm really pleased with what I've heard tonight and what, what I heard the other day.
Wonderful, wonderful.
This is, this is a great start, thank you.
Good, good, thank you, I appreciate that feedback. Yeah, it, it's true, I mean, I wouldn't be able to prepare this coordination plan or the marketing plan or have, you know, activities and actions planned out without understanding those challenges. Because again, what I saw whenever I, I came in and began to put together my proposal, I saw a 2017 strategic plan. I see so much potential ready in this city, right? And of course, COVID happened and a lot of other things happened, but, but my, you know, my kept, my question was, oh, what, what happened to the plan? Like where are we? What, you know, how are we, how can we move forward? So, but I, I am really truly pleased to say that it's already working. There's, the coordination plan is already happening, I'm already seeing partnerships form, I've already been approached for partner projects with Doka, with the Chamber, with Willamette Falls Studios, with Oregon City Guide, with Clackamas Heritage Partners, with Frog Ferry, I mean, like it's, it's already working. So now it's a matter of taking the excitement, the engagement, the new, the new energy, the motivation and putting the plan in place and saying, okay, this, these are the action steps, these are the small bites that we know this is the next step to move the needle forward. So I, I appreciate that. How am I, how am I doing on time?
You're, you're fine.
Okay, great. Okay, I will, I will quickly go over the, again, this is only year one, marketing plan objectives. And as a brand new DMO, the-
DMMO.
DMMO.
Yes.
Yep, and I, actually let me speak to that because a lot of people have asked, okay, are we Destination Oregon City or are we Travel Oregon City? Are we a DMO or are we a DMMO? So I will speak to that briefly. Destination Oregon City, Inc. is the legal name of the entity. We are a DBA Travel Oregon City, probably to match Travel Oregon, Travel Portland, many destination management and marketing organizations do that. And you, so you will often see a visitor facing brand or title versus the legal. And then DMO or DMMO, originally convention and visitor bureaus or destination marketing organizations focused largely on marketing, but they realized that that was leading towards the kind of mass tourism appeal where it was just promotion without actual stewardship of the destinations. So they understood that DMOS really had to step into a place of, of stewardship, of development, of management. And so they turned it, they changed the, the moniker to destination management organizations. Some people still say destination management and marketing organizations because it's both, but it usually marketing is, is included in the management piece. In all of our documents, our bylaws, our agreement with the city, we are DMMO. So forgive me if I do shorten it to DMO because that's just what the industry uses, but yes, we are a DMMO, we do both marketing and management. So that is a good explanation.
Former Commissioner O'Donnell is listening.
Yeah, perfect. And was, wanted to be sure that MM was on there? Perfect, yeah, no, it's a fair question. Okay, so the, like I said, in a, in a first year marketing plan, this is going to be very basic and a lot of it is going to be setting up of operations. So things, for example, we had to receive the keys to the website and the social media from the city. Well, that's, that's been done and I understand now the roles related, the contractual roles, excuse me, and responsibilities with the city. Implementing systems and tools for operational efficiency. So this is things like setting up, I use Asana, I use Canva, there are a number of platforms, like the tech stack, right? I need to set that up and, and create a content calendar to make operations efficient. And then I will also be writing an operations plan or manual on how to use all those systems, how they work together so that future staff can easily onboard. So this is all about easy and efficient operations, effective marketing operations and systems. And then of course, establishing transparent performance tracking, setting the baselines, KPIs, how many visitors do we get on our website? How many, what's our reach on Instagram? Those kinds of, those kinds of things. And then of course, I'll be creating a 2026, 2027 annual marketing plan at the end of this fiscal for the following year, that's always a recurring. Refreshing and refining the Oregon City brand, we've already kind of discussed that a little bit, just updating the brand guidelines, providing all of the proper assets and making sure I've got vector files and all of those things to, to provide to vendors. Engaging the local- Engaging the local partners in brand adoption through a marketing toolkit and cooperative ads and campaigns, things like that. And then, again, measuring that brand awareness of the Welcome Home, Oregon's hometown brand and tagline, which I'll be doing summer of next year. There's our brand slide that we already discussed. Expanding reach through strategic partnerships is the third strategy. And this is largely what we talked about in the coordination plan. Building relations, relationships and regular communication with key tourism partners. I do mean Travel Oregon, Travel Portland, Mount Hood Territory, the Chamber, and Doka as well. So these are key. Got a large group out in the background.
Somebody go out and ask them to keep it down. It's kind of distracting.
Got a party in the foyer.
Staff, could you please go out and ask them to kind of keep it down? Thank you.
Thank you. Are we, are we at time?
Oh, you, we're fine.
I'm okay?
Yeah, we started seven at the next meeting, but you're doing, okay, just, yeah, you're doing okay.
Okay, well, I will, again, this is pretty quick. Strategic partnerships, we already talked about this with the coordination plan, but really getting involved in all of the opportunities with those key travel partners as well as our stakeholders, including grants. I am going to be looking for other ways of funding, including grant programs. I've already been approached on partnership opportunities with some of our stakeholders for upcoming grants already, which is great. Cooperative advertising. These are the co-ops with Travel Portland and Travel Oregon and Mount Hood Territory that we are going to be participating in this year to have already been purchased, so that's great. Building awareness and local support for tourism. This, again, is in our coordination plan. We've already discussed that. The community engagement programs is there. And then elevating storytelling and content. This is really about capturing that unique selling proposition, capturing the stories, capturing the authentic history and being able to package and retell that story in an effective manner. So this is where we talk about social media and digital marketing, about blogs and articles, public and media relations, all of that. So that's going to be kind of getting this started in this first year. And then I've got the timeline as well. And that's it on the, and there's also the budget included for transparency. But that's it for the marketing plan. If there's time for any extra questions.
So gentlemen, ask one more time. I'm going to start at this end, please.
Honestly, you know that I have a lot of opinions and ideas about tourism. I don't really want to talk about it too much and I also don't want to do too much critiquing. I feel like we are in a place we've been wanting to be for a long time. We are putting it in the hands of the DMMO and yourself, and I think we're in good hands. And I feel like you understand, I think the whole group understands where we have been and where we're going. And I think this is a great starting place and I think I'm happy with what I see here. And I'm just, you know, willing to hold comments until we start seeing things happen. And I'm excited about it and I'm looking forward to the next couple of years.
Perfect.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say thank you so much for the presentation. And thank you not only you, but to the board. I think it's clear that, you know, they made a solid choice with, you know, bringing you on board. I think your presentation was fantastic and it's clear that you have a lot of knowledge and experience you're bringing here to the table. And I'm really excited to see kind of what this, yeah, what this looks like down the road. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the presentation and I'm looking forward to the partnership that the DMO will have with the organization. I will use the term DMO, like, because as you mentioned, that's the term in the industry and that's the same reason why when we created at RFP that I insisted we use "Live, Work, and Not Work, Live", because regardless of what we're trying to communicate, we need to use the words that the industry uses and that people recognize. And so I appreciate you pointing that out and just the level of experience you bring, the diverse experience you bring. And I'm also very excited about our work because it really is that wide swath of all the sectors in the tourism industry that we're trying to target. So great work to all of you, thank you.
And I again say, and I think Jess is still on the air. Jess, thanks for being here online. We appreciate, we got that, the food trail component[1655.32]